Okay, we are live. Good evening and welcome to our June eighth meeting. I will call to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are returning from executive session a few minutes late. We went a little bit over. First item is public comment. There was no call-ins and there is no one here, so we will skip on to recognition.
All right, so for recognition tonight, I'm gonna stay at the microphone so folks can hear it at home. We're recognizing just a wonderful educator and human being, Lorraine Marks. Everyone gets a plaque, she knows now, but I think this is a pretty plaque, Lorraine.
It's beautiful.
It's like you've already seen it.
And so I'm just gonna read it. Presented to Lorraine Marks in recognition of her outstanding professionalism, high expectations and leadership. And there's a quote from William James. The greatest revolution of our generation is the discovery that human beings, by changing the inner attitudes of their minds, can change the outer aspects of their lives. Lorraine, you've made a significant impact on the lives of the North End of students, staff and families. You're truly an example of what an excellent leader should be. Your inner attitude has positively made a difference for an entire generation of students here in North Andover. We will miss you greatly and wish you nothing but the best as you start the next chapter in your life. Appreciatively, the faculty and staff of the North End of Public Schools.
You have to get up.
I have to get up?
No.
Oh.
So, I just say with Lorraine, we're gonna miss you. I hired Lorraine personally back in two thousand nine, and one of the best things I ever did, and she's been with us since, so congratulations.
Uh, Lorraine, I know you don't like a lot of attention, but you do have, you're leaving behind really, really big shoes to fill, and I am, we are all very grateful for all the work that you've done. And I wish that I had had more time to work with you more closely, because I think you have so much to offer, and I appreciate everything that you have done and all that you have to give. Thank you.
Just a small little thought for the school committee.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I borrowed her base from the office.
So I should return that?
Probably yours, Miss Fox. Definitely not mine or Dr. Mealy's.
So, I just wanna say that I have been, I have really enjoyed my job. You know, a lot of people go to work and they complain about their job every day, and I can honestly say that I have never had that. I've had my days of trepidation, like a tough meeting, tough situation during COVID, you know, things like that, but I have been very lucky. It's a, it's a wonderful staff, teachers, all staff, custodians, kitchen workers, everybody, our central office staff, my curriculum team, the families here. I've had the opportunity to collaborate with the library, with Woodridge, with the police department, the social workers there, with the Veterans Administration, community organizations that have been phenomenal, and I just, it was an honor and a privilege to be able to work here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I do think we have your phone number, though, so watch out.
And that's okay.
You can choose to answer or not.
That's right. That's right.
Okay, we're gonna move on to consent agenda. We have minutes from May twenty fifth.
I'll approve the minutes as presented in the packet for May twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second.
Um, is there discussion?
I just wanted to add one comment. We talked about the wellness plan, and I don't know if we want to or not, just it noted in there that they were gonna make some changes, just to specify that that had to do with the, with mental wellness being added as a wellness component. I just wanna make sure that that's followed through with.
Do we think we need to wait to approve these next meetings so that we can have that edited?
Well, what, what, what are we editing? Cause we can do a friendly amendment.
Or we could do a friendly amendment.
So, on the, sorry, I'm trying to find back where it was.
So it says Ms. Barzak explained there were no proposed changes to the policy at this time, but might be in the fall of twenty twenty-three.
Right, and that was in response to my question of adding a wellness component, or a mental hea-, a mental wellness component.
Do we wanna say, like, but mental health wellness might be added in the fall of?
Something along with, or mental health wellness was a component being considered to be added.
A request, a request to add.
Yeah.
So I guess you're proposing a friendly amendment then, right?
Yep.
To, to the minutes.
Right.
Right, so we should, procedurally, we should do that, right, first?
Yep.
Right. So I propose a friendly amendment to add that it was a mental wellness provision to be considered to be added to the wellness pack.
I'll second that.
Sorry, I'm taking notes. Okay, so we will vote to approve the friendly amendment. Is there discussion first? We just had discussion?
Right, just, just, sorry, and I'm just trying to capture it from my own notes, add a mental wellness component? Is that the right word?
Let the record reflect.
Right.
Component, component.
Mental wellness was raised.
Yeah, adding a mental wellness component.
To the policy.
Policy.
To the policy, okay, got it.
So I, I had just written request to include mental health wellness po-, in the policy. Okay. I think we're all saying the same thing with different words?
Yeah.
Semantics. Okay. Ready to vote, Ms. Koenig?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. And now we need a motion to approve the minutes with the friendly amendment.
So I'll move to.
Well, we had one.
We had it, yeah.
But we didn't have one with the amendment.
The amendment's now included in the motion that we just, cause we just voted on it.
Okay.
So now we just have to vote on the, on the original motion.
So we're ready to vote, cause we already had a, got it.
Right.
Yep. The amendments make things a little complicated. Okay, Ms. Koenig?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. I was not present for the meeting, but I did review the minutes. So, here we go. All right. Moving on, we have our student representative report. We have Ben and our new representative, it looks like. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ben. I'm a junior at the high school. First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Marks for her years of public service. I know personally, she impacted my family. She was a big, one of the truly great educators for my sister Lily, so I just wanted to thank her. To start off our report tonight, we have history club. We have a team attending the national competition for National History Day next week in Washington DC. That team is made up of myself and two other juniors, Patricia Voe and McKenna Dewey. Most sports are done for the year. We have track, New England's on Saturday, and nationals next week, and boys lacrosse has a playoff game tonight. Aside from that, most spring sports are over. Oh, softball, also is a playoff game.
Wachusett?
At Wachusett, yes.
Thank you for that. And then we also have music awards tonight. It's a good night to recognize a lot of the musicians at North End of High School. And lot, or one other thing that I wanted, a concern that I wanted to bring up, as students are getting their schedules for the, for next year, is that a lot of science classes full, filled up this year. I know that's historically been a problem with AP classes, but this year it also appears that a couple honors science classes have, have filled up, and students have been placed on waiting lists. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the, of the school committee. Aside from that, the year's pretty much over. We have some finals to go in this next week and a half, and a really wonderful graduation last Friday. But I think most students are definitely looking forward to the summer.
Oh. So, hello, my name is Christiana. This is my first time here, so I'm not exactly sure what to say or do, but congratulations. I can see all the work you guys all put into the school committee, and yeah, just congratulations. So, I'm part of a lot of school organizations, like clubs at our school, so I'm a part of student council, the E-Board, which I'm also involved in, Neemask, a co-president of the gaming club, and a member of the dance team, and I also know a lot of people in other clubs to get more information. So, this Thursday, not today, but next Thursday, Coffee House is happening, so it's being hosted by the NUDS Live Music. I know a lot of people go, and I'm excited because I missed the last one, but I just think it should be promoted more, because I think it's a fun night for all high school students. And not much else is really going on. Clubs and other organizations are having their last fundraisers and meetings for the year. Like our sophomore class, they just did their last fundraiser for Panera. That's really it. Thank you.
Excellent job.
Yeah, great job.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Um, let's see, we have questions, Ms. Koenig?
No questions, but welcome. Glad to have you aboard and look forward to working with you over the next year.
Thank you so much.
For the updates, and good luck on the, the history competition.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, no, no questions, but again, welcome, Christiana. What's your last name?
Troy.
Troy? And, and you'll, you'll find this is our, like, our favorite part of the meeting, so don't worry about that. Good luck, Ben.
Thank you.
Mr. Hicks?
Uh, no, no questions. Welcome, Christiana. Do you go by Cece?
Yes, yes.
Um, so welcome, Cece. And Ben, have fun next week.
Thank you.
You'll do great.
Uh, just welcome again, and good luck on exams and finishing up the rest of your respective sophomore and junior year, and enjoy the summer.
Thank you.
Um, and I will just echo what everybody else said. Good luck, Ben, and welcome. You're gonna do great, and you did a great job tonight. Thank you. And this really is the best part of the evening every night, so thank you both for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Thanks, Ben. Thanks, Cece. And we also, next time, we'll, we'll, for next year, we'll have Harper Barrios too, joining this group, so. Though it's really nice to have, because sometimes you have an event, someone has an event, and they're all by themselves, but congratulations, nice job.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just have one. Will the student reps be joining us at the last meeting on the twenty-second, or since it's after school, are they done for the year?
Well, they're always welcome, but I can imagine they might have other things to do.
Yep.
But you're welcome.
But you're always welcome and not required, but I mean, or we'll see you in the fall. Although our meeting will be way less fun. We can take it. Yeah. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next is the superintendent's report.
All right, superintendent's report. First up on the report is the summer reading list. I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Marks.
Do you want me to click on that?
Yeah, and then I'm gonna, you have some examples of the summer reading list for middle school and elementary school in your packets. So Jim, if you could scroll down and just click on the high school one, so people can see what that is. This is on the front page of the website and various other points of the website where people can get this information for summer reads. So the high school looks a little bit different. I, I love what they did. So, just so you have that sample too. No, that's good, just so people can see. But there's a, a number of books. They talk about, you know, similar books. If you like those, you might like this, what it's about, and also the genre, and also how long it is to read, because sometimes that matters. I belong to a book club, and it's always okay, how many book, how many pages are in the book? How long does it take to listen, if you're listening, cause sometimes I do that, driving back and forth to work. So I thought they did a really cool job on that. But that information is all out and available, and obviously we've worked with Stevens Memorial Library to make sure that everybody has access to the books, so.
Is there any incentive to students to, you know, reading these? Like, what's, what's the, besides personal fulfillment, what's the motivation?
I mean, there's, there, like, say, for example, at the high school, there's conversations about the books, so that's something that happens. They, once school starts in September, we've done groups, and kids, you know, whoever read certain books, got into those groups and talked about them. Elementary, they're, it was in conjunction with Stevens, so they would get little beads to make a necklace or bracelet, depending on how many they read, and then bring them back to school. That would be celebrated during their library period back at school, so those kinds of things take place, yeah.
For some, for some high school courses, don't they have required re-, summer reading?
There are some, yeah.
Yeah.
I was just gonna ask, my kids are long past elementary, but the library used to do like a book club. Do you know if they're still doing that?
They have book clubs at the library, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, for different age ranges.
Right, okay. I just didn't know if any, do you know if any of these are part of that, or is that a separate?
Yeah, I don't happen to know that. But in the newsletter, which should be coming out tomorrow, I think.
Tomorrow, yes.
There is, Kathleen put a whole piece on Stevens, and there's a lot of information about what's going on in the summer at the library on that, so.
Those are great. The, the kids love them.
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Marks has already put together, just a quick highlight on the summer professional development opportunities for teachers and staff.
So you have in your packet, these are, there's eight pages of summer PD opportunities for teachers. So as you know, teachers have to earn their PDPs to recertify, and a lot of teachers take a little time over the summer to kind of, you know, get involved in something that they may be also interested in, like some of our equity work, culturally responsive teaching, some different opportunities for math. All teachers have to take PDPs in English Language Learners and Special Ed. So we had some courses that we did that were virtual, self-paced. A number of our teachers, you get cert-, recertified every five years, so a number of our teachers have done that. So we have some new courses up there that Desi has offered for Special Ed and EL as well, that teachers sometimes like to do over the summer when they can do it at a little leash, a little more leis-ly rate. So there's lots of opportunities there. And then I don't think this is on there as well, but we also already have our new teacher PD planned for October, so we started that probably, I think I was still humanities director when we started that, but bringing teachers in and providing some information for them around the curriculum, especially the elementary teachers who are teaching a number of subjects, and that we have specific resources that we use. So that, that is already set for that week of August twenty-first through the twenty-fifth. What we've added is going over the strategic plan with all of the new staff, doing some SEL training with all of the new staff, so it's grown a little over the years. So that is all set up as well, and the principals know what those dates are, so when they're hiring new teachers, they're letting them know. So. And the last thing I was gonna mention is, Desi, Desi's been a little last minute with a lot of things, but, so a couple of weeks ago, they did open up the application for Acceleration Academies again. So we did apply, we did the Acceleration Academies in math, which is what the opportunity was during February and April break. We did apply for a literacy acceleration academy. We will not know anything till after school's out. So they're not even gonna make those decisions till after we're out of school, but we did apply, and we, we have some plans in place to be ready to go, should we get some, some money for that.
So how long that is?
How long what?
The, the Acceleration Academies, is it like six weeks?
No, no, it would be shorter. We're looking at middle of August, mid to the later part of August, so a couple of weeks.
Just right before school to kind of jumpstart again?
Yes, yeah.
So those are, those are for students, or?
For students, yeah, yeah. So maybe we'll know by the twenty-second, and you'll know at that school committee meeting if we get that or not, but I figured I'd just mention that, so.
Well, good work on that, Lorraine. I mean, we have, most of the things we've applied for, we have got here in North Andover.
Done pretty well.
That's been incredible. The graduation recap.
Oh, sorry, question on this?
Sure.
So there's, this is great. I mean, there's a ton of stuff here at the PD. Are most of these instructors, these are in-house people, right, that are giving these courses?
Yeah.
Like the math coordinator, for example?
Curriculum team, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Our curriculum directors, our coaches, our SEL director has a course in there, our new SEL director, so, yeah.
And so, are these all likely to happen, or?
Yeah.
Typically, they, they actually happen? So people sign up, use them?
There might be one or two that don't, but yeah, we've had.
They don't get enough enrollment.
Yeah. We started this, we started doing this, really putting, putting together something for fall, for winter, and then for summer, probably a year, a couple of years before COVID, and people really have appreciated it.
Well, sure, it's convenient, right? Yeah, it's really good.
And there's an unsung hero here, I always forget to mention. Cindy Parent, Lorraine's assistant admin assistant. She does all the approvals and awarding of the PDPs and the system.
Huge job.
On top of the newsletter. And, and if you, if you wanna know anything about North End of Public Schools, go to the newsletter. It's on the front page of our website. It's really, if you take the time to read it, it has to be, I wish there was an award Cindy could win. I'm putting that together every month, because it's remarkable, so.
And those are only two, two things that she do that are big, that, there, those are big projects, but she does a lot of other things too. She is the master of all the grants, like getting all that into Desi and all of that. She just, she does a lot. She, she has a lot of institutional knowledge there, so.
Well, this is really excellent.
Okay, can I ask a quick follow-up? So this is, I mean, obviously, priority for North Andover teachers. Do we open it up to any other neighboring communities?
We haven't, you know, I think, in the past, we've done some PD. You probably remember with neighboring, neighboring communities around literacy and some different things. I think COVID came and we, you know, that was really on a halt, and like, when I met with my team today, I said, I feel like next year will be really the, kind of, the first more normal year. I mean, this year we were still kind of dealing with some of those, you know, the after effects, really. But I feel like we're gonna, you know, people are gonna be in the swing back to the way things were, and so that may be an opportunity moving forward.
And if memory serves, the new assistant superintendent is coming from a neighboring town of Andover, South Andover, so, you know, that could be a good opportunity to forge some friendships, and, okay, great.
Yeah, we've been lucky. We, I mean, we've had a lot of districts come out to look at what North End of is doing and meet with the team, and we collaborate, so really nice job, Lorraine.
Do we get feedback on how many teachers enroll for these?
Oh, yeah. We, we have to keep a record of it, cause we have to, we have to make sure that they've attended, and depending on, so some of them you can see are offered for in-service credit, so there are a certain number of hours in a project that needs to be completed, so we have to, we have to verify that that's all happened, so that's all documented.
Right, I just didn't know if it was ever brought back to us. I'm just curious to see, like, what, what are the teachers interested in taking their classes in?
Yes, yeah, that would be easy enough, cause we do have that information, yeah.
Say, could you do that, do that for us in the fall, but?
Somebody can do it.
She could be a special guest.
That's the phone call we'll make.
No flowers and plaque, but maybe we'll have her back. I don't, you know, Ms. Marks has played an incredible role with all this work, and, and the goal is just to get better. We all continue to get better, and I've, I've watched it over a long period of time, and this is a good spot to be in. So. Graduation, you know, graduation, I think I lost about eight pounds, and maybe four were from sweating from nerves, because, you know, getting up in front of over three thousand people. But graduation, it was a beautiful ceremony. It was hot. It was a hot one, but we were able to have it inside. There was plenty of space, and, you know, I was out in the community on Saturday and then Sunday, and folks were really appreciative that we made this happen. You know, typically we're outdoors, and we had to make a decision pretty early, and so we decided to be in, and just, thank God we were inside, because when I looked over and saw that thunder, heard the thunder, saw the lightning, it was a wild.
Smelled the rain.
Yeah, a wild day, but it really turned out to be a nice night, and I'm just so proud of all the graduates. And particularly, I thought one of the nice touches, we always do it, but it was really highlighted, the, the, our students who are gonna go serve in the armed forces were recognized. And, you know, every year we have a few, and it seemed like we had six or seven this year. It was just a nice night, and I think, like, I was looking at, you know, the, we did the diplomas, and something like the seal of biliteracy. I think we're at an all-time high of twenty-two students who graduated, got the seal of biliteracy. So it was just, it was just a really nice night, and I have to say, kudos to Mr. Jackson and his staff, but the custodians, they were down there. Brian Frazier, amazing. The admin assistants really made a nice night for our kids, and really appreciate the school committee did a lot of work handing out those diplomas back and forth. Hopefully we're outdoors next year, but it was a beautiful night, and there's photos here, and we were in the Tribune as well, so.
I'm gonna chime in. The, the kudos to the custodial staff who had to do a very quick turnaround after that, right, to get, get that gym ready for SOS, right? In, in like half the time they would, or less than half the time they would normally have had. That's pretty good.
Yeah. So, graduation, you guys were there, so you know. Tomorrow is my favorite, one of my favorite days of the year. It's Special Olympics. The Scarlet Knights, our Special Olympians, coaches, myself and Ms. Marks, the team, will be going over to Andover tomorrow, and will compete at Lovely Field in Andover High School, and it's just a terrific event. You know, I'll have an opportunity to give some opening remarks, which I always love, and it's a blast, and it's a real good chance we connect with our special education families, all families, so. I'm excited. We'll be over there in the morning. I think it starts at nine forty-five, and it should be quite a day, and hopefully the rain will hold off, so. That's Special Olympics. The Thompson cleanup, I just, you know, I really wanted to highlight with the Thompson cleanup, this happens at all of our schools, and so it, it was really awesome. Mr. Raymond sent me a note, and I just thought it was a good opportunity to say, like, Thompson did something a little different this year. They did it after school instead of a weekend, and they had really good participation, so I wanted to acknowledge Mr. Raymond, Mr. Kenny, Mr. Tom, the McAdoo family, the Morgans, the Bertarias, the Creedes, the Esquivilles, the Carders, the Smiths, Lundie, and just more and more families that Mr. Raymond couldn't name. But really big kudos. He does it behind the scenes. I say it every year. Peter Breen is a remarkable guy here in North Andover. He donates the mulch. He does not look for fanfare, look for promotion, and he's just done it year in and year out, and we're really lucky to have, like, you know, alum like Pete to give back. So, that was terrific, and that happened at other places as well. And then last but not least, in the newsletter that's gonna go out tomorrow, I'm gonna put in something, it's called the Bike Rodeo is coming to town. And the Bike Rodeo is an event, it's gonna be at the Atkinson School parking lot on June twenty-fourth from ten AM to one PM, and it's sponsored by the town of North Andover, the fire department, the police department, AAA, Lawrence General Hospital and Children's Hospital. And so, these events, I typically think like Bike Rodeo, they give out helmets, make sure they're safe, but they will have helmets for those who need them, and it's a bike safety course, safety inspection, helmet fittings. So it should be really interesting, because the safety course, I haven't seen that in action yet, but I just got the flyer today. We'll get that out, and I'm looking forward to that. And that wraps up the superintendent's report tonight.
Bike rodeo. That sounds fun.
Rodeo.
Um, so do the, the other elementary schools, you said, for the cleanups usually have them on the weekend?
Yeah.
But Thompson did it after school. I bet their participation was pretty high.
So Thompson had it scheduled for Saturday, that got rained out, and so they rescheduled it, but it looked like the best option was after school, which turned out to be favorable for them.
According to the note Mr. Raymond sent me, cause he sent me quite a write-up on this, he said, many hands make, you know, light work, that, that, it was like four fifteen, and they were almost done with a lot of what they did, so they, they really hit it hard. So we'll share that with the principals. You know, maybe it's an opportunity to increase that participation, so.
Thank you. Okay, so, moving on to the chair's report. The first item is our reorganization discussion. We will not vote to reorg this evening, cause we will have a meeting on the twenty-second, so we will vote then. But just to go over the process so that we're clear about what will happen, all the positions will be open. I think Mr. McDevitt, as the longest standing member, will kind of run that portion of the meeting, and then someone will mo-, make a motion to.
There'll be a nomination?
Nomination. That's the word I was looking for.
Or two, or three?
Or two, or three, and then we will vote on that.
Do nominations have to be seconded, or are they just?
Yes.
Yes.
They'd have to follow the procedure?
Do they have to be handled in order individually?
That was my question also, if there was more than one. What was your question?
Oh, my question was gonna be, are, is, are, is our, are, A-R-E, all of us permitted to nominate? In other words, can Mr. McDevitt nominate if he's, if he's, I think he can, but I'm just clarifying that.
So according to Robert's Rules of Order for small committees, I can.
You can?
Yes.
And then did?
I think if it was a really large one, you probably wouldn't, but.
And do you know, like, so if there was more than one, how does the voting process work?
So I, I think, I don't know if it's happened in a while, but I think there would be, let's just say there were three nominations. There are three nominations. And then somebody would have a move force one person to be chair. It's not a vote for your candidate type of thing. I think somebody would have to move, for example, I move Mr. Smith or Mrs. Smith, you know, to be chair.
Okay.
So they're voted, so it's an individual?
They're voted based upon who makes a motion.
So you get one nomination?
No, you get.
Well, I'm saying, a motion is made.
You get nominations and then a motion.
So if three people are, so for example, three people are nominated, then someone moves to?
Moves for one of them.
For one of them. And if that person's elected, this process is, that part of the process is over.
Is over.
I see. Wow, that's complicated. Okay.
It's kind of awkward because, like, you don't vote for.
You're not voting for the multiple, you're not voting for the multiple candidates at the same time.
Correct.
Wow.
I guess I'm just, because I'm, I'm trying to understand. Because I'm reading, because it's like, okay, if it's elected, like by a majority roll call vote of the members present voting, if no nominee receives a majority vote, the election will be declared null and void and nominations will reopen. So I'm taking that as, as like we nominate one at a time and go through them.
Yeah, that's how I read it. I nominate Mr. Smith. We then, if it gets seconded, we discuss. We vote. If it doesn't work, then you go on to, I nominate Mrs. Smith.
Oh, I see.
But it says nominations are made from the floor. The chairperson will be elected by a majority of the members if no nominee receives a majority. So I would assume that would, there would be, all nominations are made. Let's say there are two or three and nobody gets majority, then we would go back to nominations again.
So that would, that would argue that we're voting on multiple people simultaneously. In other words, say three people are nominated, A, B, and C, then you, that's the opposite of what you said before, right? You're saying there has to be a motion to vote on one of them.
There's a motion to vote on one of them.
Yeah, we've watched this play out before, right? So we watched this play out, remember when we, I forget who was appointed. Was it Dave Turrissey was appointed by the select board? And it was, I don't know, a bunch of candidates applied. And it was kind of a similar process. So, you know, if I'm on, Dr. Mealy, Ms. Marks and I are on the school committee, so I make a motion to have Lorraine be the chair. So that's one nomination for Lorraine to be the chair.
And then you would second that and vote for Lorraine or not? Or you would wait for another nomination?
I think you could, you could, you know, it could possibly go that way. But I think you could also have another nomination. And then as a group, figure out who you gotta move.
We'll get clarification.
Yeah, I think we've always taken all nominations. We've always taken a nomination, asked if there was a second nomination. I don't believe there has been a second nomination. That's why it's kind of odd. And then there was a, there would be a vote or a motion on one of the two.
I'm curious myself now. We'll get clarification.
We'll get it.
Because it's either, it's either that you, you have a motion in second and you act on that, or you have a motion in second, any other nominations, and then somebody has to be put forward.
It's a nomination.
A nomination, right, right. Yeah.
So you could have more than one person.
Possibly, right? We'll get clarification.
We'll find out.
How that.
I'm glad you're doing it.
How that works, logistically.
Andrew, but you do recall, I believe the select board, sitting at the meeting, I remember it was like, someone was up and then they didn't get the votes. And then someone else was up and they didn't get the votes.
But there might be a different policy outlining that process then.
There may be.
Maybe, so is it?
It's a different, it's a fill in the vacancy, yeah.
So is this, so what governs this is school committee policy?
Yeah.
Or?
Policy BDA.
Right. So online, you can find all our school committee policies. They're there, right?
Right.
So somewhere there it defines this.
Yeah, that's right here. It's just hard to understand. It's a little.
But then it's also a lot of its rules, how you would handle nominations for positions.
For smoker.
Okay, so that's what you're gonna go?
That's what I'm gonna look at.
Go research. Okay.
Okay. And we can get clarification on this.
That could matter, right? That could be significant.
Right.
If multiple people seek a spot.
Right.
At our second. I guess it's possible. Yeah, of course it's possible.
Of course it is.
Yeah.
Okay, other discussion?
Okay, so just make sure. So then, once we just vote on the chair, we have a majority on the chair. That, the chairperson then takes over for that, then on, on vice chair.
Facilitate the election of the new chair.
So then the new chair would take over the, or whoever is.
From that point forward, for the remainder of the year.
For vice.
No, I know that, but for the vice chair and the, yeah, for the rest of the meeting. Right. I think I had COVID when I, yes, I think I had COVID when I was elected. And so it was a little fuzzy. We were virtual.
Were we?
Yeah. No.
I miss Sparkles the cat.
I remember sitting in my bedroom.
Sparkles the cat?
Yeah. When chair precarious the chair.
I was virtual, no one else was.
Because you had COVID.
Because I had COVID. For like the third time, or something. Okay. And then let's move on to the Hall of Fame Committee. So the vice chair takes on the role of organizing the Hall of Fame Committee, Hall of Fame submissions. But we usually have the vice chair and one other member of the school committee can be involved as well. And then we also have our union rep.
Yeah, so it's typically the vice chair, there's a member of the school committee. It will be Ms. Coning. There's a member of administration that will be Greg Landry, who's the director of HR. There's a representative of the union, and that is Jane Broderick, who's a fifth grade teacher at Kittredge. Also a resident of town, longtime resident of town. And.
And then a resident of town.
And then there's a resident of town. And that is Mary Helen Paradise, who is a teacher at the high school. Union member, and also a longtime member of, a longtime resident as well. So super quickly, there are three applicants. There's one piece of information we're just getting solidified for that last one. And then the committee will meet at some point next week and present their recommendation. We only put one candidate forward for the committee. And the other two candidates remain basically in the holding tank, if you will, for the next year's possibility of being selected. That the candidates are recognized when teachers get professional teacher status, which is typically somewhat the end of October or so. They help to open the start of the school year. So they always speak at the beginning of the school year. And then there's a plaque that is put outside a, typically a classroom that they may have taught in or worked in. Gets to be a little bit hard, because sometimes teachers have moved from one building to another, or they may have worked at the old high school. And believe it or not, it's 20 something, they're 20 years old now, and they may not have taught in there. But nominations are closed at this point. But we have three really outstanding candidates for us to decide. And so next meeting, I'll be asking the committee to review who that candidate is and to vote on them.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yep.
Two questions. The, the policy says that you can forward, select no more than two award recipients per year.
Correct. We have typically done one.
Okay.
Back in probably 2012 or 2013, we did two and decided to skip a year after because we kind of wanted it to be one. So, yeah.
And then second, the policy also says within 60 days of the nomination deadline, which would be June 30th. I recall last year, we did two readings of the, of the candidate in open meeting. Will we be able to do that this year?
Probably not in order to have them be opening the school year.
They don't open the school year. It's the previous year.
Is it the previous?
Yeah.
Yes.
They'll get inducted in October, maybe next year.
Whoever was in October, and my mind is blank right now, will be the opening speaker for the school year.
School adjustment counselor.
Okay.
Peter Kincaid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we could, we could do it.
At the retreat?
The 22nd or the 21st. And then we could conceivably vote at the retreat. I think it's better to do it in a meeting that we have that's open. So it'd be probably end of August, early September that we could vote.
I feel like we did, did we do that? I think that's the way it happened.
We did it. We had another, another quick open meeting.
Oh, we did.
Yeah.
Yep, you're right. Yeah.
Pretty much. But to me, but to me, for this policy, you all just have to present the candidate by the 60 day.
Within 60 days, right.
Which we will do on the 22nd for our first reading. If we need to do a second, that can happen afterwards.
That could.
Am I understanding that correct? That was more of a question. That was.
And I'm never, I always vote against it, but there could be a motion to suspend.
Despite the rules.
I was gonna ask that.
Absolutely.
Contradicts myself.
Okay. Thoughts, other questions about the Hall of Fame process?
I'm excited to learn about the candidate.
There's three.
You have to wait for the next meeting.
I guess I do have a question. If, so the policy is no more than two. So if there are two, two that you just can't decide between, you could put forward two?
We could put forward two.
Okay.
And when we did two, again, back in probably 2012, 2013 or something like that, we did two and then voted to not do one the following year.
I see.
Yep.
But we can do whatever.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
How long do the ones that aren't selected, are they in the holding, this is the following year? Or is it like continuously until?
They stay in the pool.
They stay in forever.
So unlike the baseball Hall of Fame, where they drop out after five years?
I was just gonna say, there's no five-year dropout. Yeah, no. And it's actually really good because I think a number of years ago, we had, I want to say like five or six that were kind of in. And there are some years we don't get a new submission. So.
Okay, so next, the next item is the teaching assistance contract, which I am happy to report has been ratified by the union. They had 82% of their union voted and 91% approved. And just to give a couple of highlights, they have, we were able to get some competitive wages. They compressed the steps from 20 to 12. Years two and three have a, I believe this is correct, two and a half percent increase. And they were, we were able to address concerns about number of paydays and family leave. So those are some really great highlights of their contract. And we voted in executive session with a 5-2-0 approval. And so we are really excited to, to share that information and, and get them ready to go for next year. Hopefully, the rest of our contracts will move along as smoothly. And I thank all of the work that was done for all the parties involved and all the teams. And Jim, I would be remiss if I did not. Thank you. You have been amazing, number crunching, understanding what needs to happen and who to talk to and how to talk to them. I'm just so thankful for all of your work. And Helen, yes, of course, Helen, who stayed on to help that transition process. I stepped in as well, once the, once we had a shift in our committee. And really grateful for the team that was there. And just lots of creative thinking and solution-based thinking really made a difference and make this, helped to make this successful. So that's a really good update. Let's see. School building committee updates. For the middle school, are there updates that you would?
Nothing new from last time. Just a reminder for everyone that we had adjusted the bid package to go out to, for bid, which it's out now, include some alternate bid options to account for construction estimates versus the approved budget from town meeting. Hopefully, the, with, I think we had 10 companies get pre-qualified to bid with that amount of competition. Hopefully, that drives the number down a little bit. And all that stuff gets included. We're meeting on July 18 to finalize, or to review all the bids and to vote to award the official bid. It's a little behind where we wanted to be, but part of the, after discovering that the construction estimate of where it was, they were able to address the phasing timeline. And they were able to compress the schedule down to about 18 months instead of 24. So even though we might be a month late in starting, we will be hopefully five months early in finishing. So we're doing great.
The only other thing is yesterday was the pre-bid walkthrough. So all of the GCs, not all of them, it wasn't mandatory, but a good number of GCs who were gonna bid and the subcontractors were at the middle school walking through, getting a sense of the job.
And yours, they're supposed to be starting in July, right? The end of July? No?
Most likely, go ahead.
Yeah, we will award the bid on July 18. So then whatever time it takes them to mobilize and get ready to do the thing, so.
End of the summer at some point.
There's a, there's a time that you need to set aside for the contract to get executed as well. So in all likelihood, we're talking first to second week of August.
Okay.
When you see action.
Shovel in the ground.
Right.
But lots of really great things. A very smart design for the addition, smart choice on how to phase all the work for the older part of the building. We've made sure that the road and the access up to the A-B-C-C will remain to be, stay open and safe for everybody. We've accounted for where our construction workers will be parking and how their construction vehicles will be getting in and out of the site, so.
And I imagine once people start to see construction workers and trucks and vehicles and everything happening, that some questions might start to roll in. So we do have all of this updated on our website. That's right.
Yes.
There's a special section for it, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Question, no. When, when are the, so we had 10 pre-qualified, right?
I think it was, I think it was 10.
Something like that. And there, are those bids already received or is their deadline?
If they did, they did their walkthroughs yesterday. I don't know the official deadline for the, for the bids to come in.
But it hasn't passed yet.
It has not passed yet. I could, I could look it up and.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
I'll get that information for you.
Yeah, I'm just curious when the deadline is. We really know how many bids we have at that point.
I'd say, Joe, you really highlighted two key points. One is the safety of our students. That's the top priority while we're in school. And then two, minimizing anything that interrupts them getting an excellent education. So it's a really good group working on it.
Yes.
Very exciting.
Thank you.
And then Kittredge, do we have significant updates?
This is one, I mean, I mean, obviously, the town passed at town meeting, the funding for the design. We updated the Massachusetts School Building Association last week, or is it last week or a week, two weeks ago? I forget now.
We completed for the deadline, the design enrollment certification.
Yep. I was just gonna say the enrollment pieces. And then anything else? I don't think there's anything additional.
Yeah, I mean, we had met with the MSBA and, you know, the moving forward with the Kittredge School with 15 core classrooms and that ancillary space, you know, for special education, EL, all the different spaces. So we're really excited about it. And, you know, it's, that's a process. And we'll keep plugging along and meet the deadlines.
What's the question? What's the rough timeline for when that would happen?
I want to turn that over to Dr. Mealy.
It's a longer timeline I'm gonna get?
It is. And there's a depends, you know, like there often is. So we are, we have been on track. And so there's a possibility of it getting started sooner than normal. But in all likelihood, we're probably talking about not the, you know, next summer, but the summer after that, when we start construction. It would be surprising if we were gonna start next summer, if, if everything fell into place. But in all likelihood, given the process, we're probably talking the summer after that.
So two summers from now?
Correct.
Summer '25.
Correct. Yep.
And that's exciting because when you build this project, it's a little different than the middle school because they're on a separate space. And we've seen it done here in town with the Thompson School. We saw it done with the high school. Um and we've seen it done here in town with the Thompson School, we saw it done with the high school. You know, and the A B E C is, that was a whole different uh setup that came in in pieces, forty-six pieces in July, late July, early August. And they put it together, so.
The timeline difference because we were working with the MSBA, just the, the things that we have to do and the processes are just a little longer.
Exactly, in in the
Of worth it.
Yeah, it definitely is, but you know.
Fifty percent reimbursement, it's definitely, it takes a huge burden off.
There's very specific steps about choosing the design firm and then their design and the steps they have to go through. You know, certain percentage, fifteen percent, twenty-five, fifty to ninety percent, and then it goes out to bid. So just part of that process, you, it 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 results in a very good product, um but it does stretch it out. Yep.
I just wanted to know with rough, you know, order of magnitude sort of.
Mm-hmm.
They'll be building that school really with kind of no interruption with the students, right? Because that that will be a separate building and then the students will be able to move in. When we do the middle school, the addition will be put on and then students will move in. But then we'll be renovating, for example, the sixth grade wing and students will move out of there to, so that when we do Kittredge, even though it may be longer, it's actually kind of less disruptive
Right.
to students and faculty because they just pick up, not just, I don't mean to say that, but they just they will pick up and move and be into a new building.
Like we did with the high, high school.
Like the old high school to the new.
Yes.
Yep.
And we'll save some bricks, I'm sure.
Yes, make an arts way. Put it in stands back there.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, moving on to old business, we have our second read and vote for the high school history curriculum update.
I think Ms. Marks emailed everyone on the committee to see if they had any questions. I know that there's another event tonight, um Mr. Sheehy's at, so.
So I will move that the committee uh accept the recommended history update as presented in the packet.
Is there a second?
Second?
Is there a discussion?
Yes. Um, the two questions that I had asked um Ms. Marks and she got answers for I think are pertinent. Uh, the change will go into effect this September, um which I think matters. I asked some questions about timeline um and the language that we were presented that was drafted for the program of studies was drafted in November um and included in the program of studies that was given to students um for course selection in Power School in January. Um so, uh and then course selection happened in early February. And then, of course, it was accounted for in the budget um with the textbook purchase as well. The reason why I asked those questions is I feel like we are, it's coming to us at the end. Um and I feel like that's not necessarily the right time for us to be approving something that's already happened in that it's already part of the, what kids signed up for and the schedule that's been built and the classes that have been allocated and the budget approved. It feels like if we're going to adopt, uh accept a report and officially adopt a policy, we should do that after the department has done their work, but before it's published and shared with kids. Cause now it feels like we have no choice but to vote yes. Um, so that was my first concern. And then my second concern is the um, I'm not I don't like, I understand what the choices are and I think it's important that we get U S History into the high school, um U S History one. I think that's an important thing to do. I'm not particularly a fan of having s- two very different things happening in the tenth grade where some kids are taking U S History one and others are taking A P World or Global Studies. I liked previously where there was World Civ, World History and Global Studies in the tenth grade. I felt there was some good continuity for student experience, um so having the different things is a little odd to me. Um and I just wonder if it would be better to have all ninth grader, if it's important for us to spend the money on putting the course into the high school to make sure kids are taking this thing because it's that important, would it be better to have that in the ninth grade and take out World Civ one and keep tenth grade with World Civ two and A P World History and Global Studies the same? So I just have some questions around that in terms of continuity for students.
So I think um I, I don't remember all the specifics off the top of my head for that. We knew we had to make the change, as I said, we talked about this pre-COVID. You know, our students were not getting all the information that they needed, so we needed to to act on this and we had started, you know, a number of years ago. Unfortunately, Brian and Chuck could not be here. I know when I responded to you, I said, I had asked if you had further questions to get them to them or get them to me so I could have answers for you and I didn't hear anything, so unfortunately, I can't give you a lot of specifics about that, but I know that there were reasons why the trajectory of courses had to go the way that it does. So, but I don't, I, I don't have every specific detail to give you here tonight.
Wondering if it has to do with course requirements, like graduation requirements and credits?
It's a standard.
I think a number of things.
So the standards, uh they recommend four different courses for high schools and high schools typically do three of them, but they're flexible. So you don't have to, you could, you like, there's some, there's some leeway there um as well.
I guess I'm just curious too, like if this was given to s- to students, you know, back in February, why? I mean, I think it was scheduled to come before us in maybe April.
We got delayed one meeting.
So why does it take so long to come to us when students have already selected as a course?
I think what we were really coming to you with um at that point was sharing our tech, the um curriculum, the resource that we wanted you to take a look at. So that was our original intent in April. So we had talked about this, I, as I said, years ago, that this whole change had to happen. So I think that we were not thinking that that was gonna be um as big of an issue, so. Um there were, you know, there were students, this, this was horrifying to me, but when we had the Holocaust speakers come in, there were students at the high school who said they never had any education about that because they missed this with COVID and the fact that we hadn't made some of these changes. So, you know, to me, that's scary, that there are kids that are missing really important, big pieces of history because we needed to get, get moving on that and get that change in place, so.
To be fair, Ms. Marks, I, I don't know if this change necessarily addresses that. Uh, yes, there's gonna be gaps in kids' knowledge because of COVID and all that and because of the shift in standards, wholeheartedly agree. In that particular instance, this could effectively worsen that in terms of the Holocaust because the World Civ two is where that would normally be part of the study. Um and or in U S History two, which is already, which is still being studied. So like adding in World His- U S History one doesn't really address that. And I know you're just using an example of kids are missing things, but
Something, right?
I, I, I understand that completely. And I know we have to make adjustments, but I feel like the timeline that we've been given and the choice we have to now, the thing we need to vote on now just doesn't sit right.
Yeah, I think in a perfect, I duly noted for the record. I think in a perfect world, we, you know, we time a little differently. You know, and we're looking at, you know, funding opportunities and really getting a resource uh for kids to be able to teach to these standards, so. You know, in a perfect world, we probably would have had them in earlier for sure.
Under our, our policies, this type of of change, what, does that, where does that fall under? Is that under I G A or is it under I G D or is it both? So I G A is curriculum development and I G D.
I have I G J, which is textbook selection and adoption.
But it's a
Curriculum adoption is I G D.
Oh, I guess, I guess. I, I got the, the textbook adoption, but I guess, isn't this adding a, a curriculum as well?
I used to look at it as shifting curriculum, so.
It would be a shift to cover the standards that the state puts out for us to cover.
There is a policy, I think it's I G D, one of them talks specifically calls out the program of studies. And that it would be our voting to accept that report is our official adoption of that as a course of study. Forget exactly which one it is.
I G D is curriculum adoption.
Yeah, I think it's the second paragraph on that. Perhaps the last paragraph.
The committee shall be informed of all new courses and substantive revisions in curriculum. It will receive reports on changes under consideration. Its acceptance of those reports, including a listing of the high school program of studies, will constitute its adoption of the curriculum for official purposes.
Yeah, that's what we came with last ti- you know, last time it was really looking at the program of studies, how that adjusts with this.
So if we're noting that we would like a different timeline in the future, putting that over here, the rest, aside from you're not being sure of the flow which can be adjusted as needed, sometimes when you make changes, you see what works and then make changes as needed, which it happens all the time in schools, that's how we work. Is there other discussion about, like, so we'll make a note that we would pref- you know, that there's a preference for the timeline to be done differently. But are there other questions or concerns moving this forward?
So I was gonna speak up a little bit.
Sure.
The, the, I like, what I like about this or what I liked about, what I heard last, do it two weeks ago when we last talked about it, was that it, you know, it addresses a chronic need to modernize the curriculum, that this, these books are twenty years old and the materials are twenty years old. They don't really reflect uh current, current uh social situations very well. That really resonates. Um and the fact that there's, you know, the, the online components of this, which is, you know, clearly not gonna be there in twenty-year-old material. Those are all really good positives and I was excited. But I am a little stressed out to, I think Joe's making a very good point, right? That, that I didn't realize that what, you know, two weeks ago was not presented to us that, oh, by the way, this is already in the, you know, this is already kinda done. And that really, that's bad process. We shouldn't, we shouldn't do that. So I think we, I have a dilemma now to support this because we know, I don't wanna encourage that. I think that's, that's actually significant, a significant issue.
But to not support it keeps the twenty-year-old materials there and will inhibit and change how many students' schedules. So I get what you're saying and if we can note and request that this process happens in a different order moving forward and I think that point has been made really clear.
Yeah.
Then we should in, accept that in good faith and, well, my opinion, and move this forward because we have really great qualified administrative and curriculum teams who have picked a curriculum that seems like it's the best for our students. And if this doesn't get voted in, then that is a really large ripple effect that will negatively impact our students.
So a clarifying question, so I know you said this was initially thought or discussed quite a while ago. Was the, was the current, what, what, can you remind me, what was the reason why, like, why was this brought to the school committee, say, last November versus?
I, uh, to be very honest with you, because we are constantly playing catch-up with COVID. Like, we've had a lot of things on our plate. Um, you know, we've, we've talked about, they, I made sure that they included that when they talked last week, the um student um civics projects that need to be in the high school, we've got them in the middle school, they need to be in the high school. We've had a lot of discussions that it has to happen last year. I mean, you know, some, some high schools have already started, some are, some I've talked to other curriculum directors, assistant superintendents, some schools are in the same situation we are. So, I mean, to be honest, we have only so many people and it's been a lot, a lot of stuff that's had to be taken care of in the past few years. And we're, you're trying to pull those important pieces and get as much as, as we can done.
So you're, you're coping with the reality.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's one other question though. Um, so uh Mr. Sheehy, when he presented this, he did raise uh something similar to the issue that you were just talking about, Mr. Hicks, about the um that there were some things that were gonna be dropped or that he was concerned were going to be dropped. I don't remember specifically what they were, but he mentioned a number of items that sort of fell off when you take this approach. But that, you know, that was gonna be on him and his team to address, right?
And they were hoping to wrap that into certain other pieces of the courses that were being taught. So certain things could be wrapped into Western Civ, for example. And we also had allocated some money for social studies teachers, high school social studies teachers to work on that development this summer.
Okay.
So that they will be prepared when they go in in the fall.
Okay, so that's, so if we support this, that's going to happen?
Yes.
That, that last piece?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Again, I'm gonna echo, I think what's already been said. I don't think anybody likes the process this, that this went through.
I disagree with that.
And, you know, I think Mr. Hicks, you know, said it pretty well. I mean, like, we're now basically forced to vote for this because it's already been presented out to the students and parents and, you know, course collect, uh, uh, selection as it's already gone through. Um, so I think there's kind of two options, right? I mean, like, we can be really angry about the process and vote no on this. And that is perhaps to the detriment of our students who we're here to support. Um and we can continue to give twenty-year-old textbooks and no online resources or we have the ability to vote yes on this and be um angry about the process that happened and figure out what needs to happen to ensure that it doesn't happen again. So I don't think I had, coming into the meeting, as much reservation about this as I think um I did until after Mr. Hicks spoke. But ultimately, I gotta think of the kids and um where are we going with that? So that, that's my thoughts.
I think I asked this last week. The, the only part we're voting on right now, though, is the program of studies piece that the, the textbook and the budget has uh has already been allocated and the motion is just to accept the program of study. So the textbooks are still useful regardless for U S History two, those because it's a U S History textbook, it's gonna be used, it's been used in both courses, correct? So like that, I I think like it's, that's like, yes, but I think it's, it's also a little, also there's some nuance there. And I would just like to say, like, in the future, if there's going to be a change in the program of studies that's substantial like this, we, we, I, I, I would be unwilling to support those things if we don't have them before they go out to kids. Cause once they go out to kids, then we effectively have become a rubber stamp and it doesn't like, if I'm going to approve something, I need to make sure that I, if I'm gonna vote yes for something, it has to be something I actually wanna vote yes for and not be forced to do. Cause then I have to stand if I, behind it and defend it and say it is in fact the best thing for our kids. Um, so.
Well, and I just wanna follow up on that too, because as, as we vote on this, should there be some type of issue with the community or the parents? They come and look at us and there's, we're the ones that they're holding accountable for this. But I, I completely understand, I mean, our, our best interest is always for the students. We always have to do what's best with, with the students. Um but just looking at the process differently in the future to make sure that before it gets to the students and we're put, our hands are tied, that, that's thought through a little more carefully.
Very fair points. I think um, one of the things I think is important is we haven't had the money for a lot of resources for the traditional, like, textbook adoption. And so it's been probably quite some time since we've come through with that. Because this is actually a resource um that we're using um that is a traditional textbook. And we haven't, as you guys know who've been on the committee, it hasn't been, you know, that's very few textbook adoption processes that we've done, so very fair point.
Is there a motion? It was me.
Dave.
Right, sorry.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Okay, so are we ready to vote then? Ms. Konik?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
An annoyed yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
I'm also gonna vote an annoyed yes.
I think it's all annoyed.
And I will vote yes, we are five to zero. Okay, let's move. Move on to our annual appointment of our school physician.
Dr. Chan's not here tonight, but as um we've had, you know, we talked, uh, I think, pretty extensively with Cheryl Bozak at the last meeting. Dr. Chan's been here, I think, twenty years and he gets, he hasn't had to raise in twenty years. It's been the same pay the entire time. Uh, he does a wonderful job. We need a school physician by law and uh he's always available to us, so.
Is there a motion?
So I'll move that the committee appoint Dr. Chan to serve as a school physician consultant for fiscal year twenty-four at an annual cost of nine thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Discussion?
I think that the raise is well deserved.
Wonderful.
I would say so.
Great, ready to vote, Ms. Koenig?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, we are five oh, and moving right along to the student activity funds. Do we have a motion?
Um, I'll move that, that we adopt the student activity, uh, funds as shown to us on the packet.
I'll second.
Discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, uh, Ms. Koenig?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Wonderful.
One in the loop, uh, we periodically have to have an outside firm audit our student activity accounts. Uh, we schedule, schedule that for July.
Great. Thank you. Okay, there is no new business, there is no public, is there a motion to adjourn?
Uh, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I guess this could be new business, I, I don't know how, this new, can new business be introduced by us? This way, it has to.
Well, I think, cause the agenda is set and posted.
Uh-huh.
I think not.
Not really, so new business would have to be part of the agenda setting process? Okay.
Someone, I guess, bringing up this part of comment?
Um, what, what, what I wanna know is, what I wanna ask is, is, um, the status of the, of the existing audits? Is there a way to get an update on that, or does that need to be an agenda item?
That's not really an agenda item, that's a question you can ask.
Okay, so, yeah, so we have a couple of audits going on, right? There's a, um, a, uh, special education audit, right?
Well, we have a, we're, we're in the process of trying to schedule a special education review.
Review.
Correct, there's a firm that has been selected, and they're working out the details of the review itself.
So we don't have a, so is there a schedule for that, or?
Not yet.
Not yet, so we're waiting on that?
Correct.
Okay, and is there anything else going, isn't there?
Yeah, the equity.
There's a town and school equity audit.
So that's the one that was still in the bid process, um, you know, we just finished up with references, um, they should award that bid, and that, that will be a year-long, uh.
And it's town wi, that's town-wide, right?
It's, it's not just the schools, I, as I mentioned in the goals in the beginning of the year, I think it's really important, because we do work so closely with the library, police, fire, Rick Gorman, um, so we're pretty excited that, that's moving along, um, better than I expected, so. And then out of that, I mean, we're looking at anywhere from three to five, even some districts are looking at longer-term plans of six to eight years, um, based on the work that has to come out of that, so.
So that's, you're saying that's in the bid process now?
Yes, yep, people have already bid.
That one was a request for qualifications, they've been submitted and evaluated, and now they're determining which firms will be brought in to interview.
Okay, all right, that's it, thank you.
Um, I have a public comment, I guess, Madam Chair, um, I think it's good things. Um, so two years ago, the select board proclaimed each June Pride Month in North Andover, and each June, the pride flag is flown on the flagpole of the Old Common. This year, we didn't do a pride flag raising, the flag just up, went up without much fanfare, um, and it'll quietly be taken down at the end of the month, and this is good, it's no big deal. It's just the way things happen here in North Andover, and that makes me really, really happy. Um, not everyone of the LGBTQ plus community is as lucky, um, the last few years have brought a host of challenges all around us, steps are being taken to erase us from the narrative and to make us invisible, so we have to continuously take steps to make sure that we're seen and valued and, um, safeguarded. I imagine, and I don't know what they are, that there are steps this body could take to collectively take to make sure our policies provide a safe, supportive, inclusive, welcoming space for queer youth, um, to exist and to learn in, I know we do a lot of work, and I'm very happy about that, and it's something that we have to continuously look at, um, so I encourage us, and I'm pushing us as a body and as a board to lean into that work, um, so that we can make sure that our students, and particularly our trans students of late, um, feel, um, safe and part of our school community, um, as it seems that they are constantly been under attack, um, nationally, um, and I wanna state to our LGBTQ plus students, from our youngest kids at the A B E C C, and yes, we do have queer youth in our elementary schools, um, that I see you, I, I'm, I'll say this to we, the board, that we see you, we care for you, and we'll continue to advocate for you on behalf, on your behalf, to make your community and your schools safe and welcoming.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Should have some discussion.
Is there discussion? Ready to vote, uh, Ms. Koenig?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
I'm abstaining.
All right, four to one, we are adjourned. Did you really abstain, that's funny?